Little Greg. Greg. We got, we got big Greg and little Greg. I was gonna talk to little Greg about the water conservancy district and trying to get the canal approved for a trail.
He's running late, he's all.
Here's the biggest legal thing, Tim.
Isn't there something?
In the United States and Canada condos are managed under specific laws set by the federal and local government.
This thing has been stopped.
Townhomes are governed by rules that also.
This is what I thought, I thought. If we may, if we draft up an agreement, have it run through Liam, have Weber Conservancy District sign it, and then send it to Blake Moore and get the Department of the Interior to sign it, then we're good. On the, on the trail along the canal.
The only part of that that gets a little tricky is.
Oh, my crack. I'm gonna get my stuff. Well, if you don't want it, give it over here, I'll take it.
No way to cross over.
Oh heck, this is the light stuff.
No.
Geneva didn't take one.
You just go.
Yeah, she didn't want one.
Make, make the trail into the last logical.
Then she was leaving.
Spot.
I said, oh yeah, you got your.
And then.
You sign that.
It's a lot of the future further down and anyway, so yeah, that was the one that's missing. Regularly right. Cause if dog legs. Centennial or. Okay, where's the trails? Are those?
Do you have to the top of Ninth Street?
Probably not.
There's a nice big trust system that goes all along the old canal up there. And it's cut, the nice, the bad thing about canals is if you're gonna put public there, you should cover them.
Yeah, why is that?
People try to jump in them and swim and drown and.
The Arken River uncovered, people jump in.
Okay.
Little difference.
We're gonna go ahead and get started.
You can get out of the Arken River.
It's a steady line.
Cause of the moss.
You've got the floor.
Okay, I'll take it. What we've got and then, so I've got, everybody, I gave you a new copy and everything in black is things that we've already gone over. In blue, this was the thing in contention with Geneva on D on page two. In the blue, the open space. I don't have the page's number, it's just the second page. Right there, D. This is the one where we had the where she was contending that we need to just say fifteen percent of the total acreage and not add the streets and everything else in it, but I think we debated that too long and I think that we misread that because if you look at this, it says not less than fifteen percent of the total acreage of the planned development shall be retained as permanent open space parks, playgrounds, et cetera. So that means let's do some math. So say we do a ten acre development. That means the developer has to reserve one point five acres for open space. And this reads, and in that one point five acres, he cannot claim that roads or required setbacks and stuff apply to that one point five acres. That's how that, that's how that is. He's gotta have one point five acres of total open space.
What, refresh my memory, what was?
The debate was that she thought it would be too hard to calculate out.
I never understood that. And you, you've got a surface area, you know what the acreage is, you just.
You just say one point five acres of ten acres is gonna be.
I never, never could understand the problem.
I think part of the argument was is including the streets as open space.
No, well, that's what I, I like this statement.
Oh, I do too, cause you're not counting it, but from a developer's side of things, they wanna count the streets as open space.
And what we're saying is.
No.
No. We, when all the dust settles, we want to see fifteen percent.
Yep.
Open space. I don't care what you do at your roads, but.
I agree with you, I'm just letting, that's what my understanding of the argument was.
I think this statement is very clear.
So going, so, so going back to this, our argument from last time, it would not be hard to figure this out. I mean, it's fifteen percent of whatever. It's easy. She was saying, oh, the calculations all be weird, it'll be hard for a developer to do that. I'm like.
No more than the calculations you have to make for an excessive building.
I'm like, I'm like you have. I'm like you have.
You don't even need an engineer for this calculation.
It's like, you have seventy-seven acres you're developing, you times that by point one five and then, and there you go, there's your calculation open space. So it wasn't that big. Anyway, and I went back through.
And did the.
And looked at ten others and eight of them all had similar statements.
End of conversation. That's what I wanted you to do, you know, so we're not doing something.
Not doing something weird. It's good. So I say we keep.
There is that aren't.
I say we keep this the way it is.
I think there's more of us in favor of this verbiage.
Yep.
Than aren't of, in favor of this word.
We actually voted on it last time too, and like six of us.
It was only kinda one voice. Well, maybe Geneva and the cow over there, what? Who did you invite to our meeting there, Lyle?
I forgot to meet my phone.
Barrier effort. Alright, so are we good with D then? Leave it, leave it B, we're good, move on. So now if you go, just flip through till you find some more color here. Guarantees and covenants. So we need to kinda step through these. I'm gonna say, let's, let's ju- jump to the red actually first. The red talks all about condominium developments. And from what we talked about, we are not discussing condominium developments here. Like, if you read that first paragraph, it's the applicant for any planned development which is being developed is condominium project under provisions of the Condominium Ownership Act of Utah and so forth, and that whole section goes through condominiums. And I would say let's ax condominiums. This is just verbiage brought over from that other ordinance, and so I just wanted to check with everybody to make sure they're okay with axing condominium developments.
I don't have any problem with that at all myself.
Yep, cause, cause I was thinking if they wanted to do a condominium development, they could do it in a mixed use zone with a, with a development agreement.
Exactly. Condominiums kinda like townhomes anyway.
Yeah.
You just rent them out instead of, well, I guess you don't rent them out.
But you, condos are usually sale.
That's what I'm saying is, yeah, I was wrong there, but.
One of the biggest differences between condos and townhomes is the condos, all you own is inside the walls. Whereas on a townhome, you own the ground that it sits on too.
And the exterior.
Footprint. Well, no, no, not the exterior, just the footprint. So you can, in some, I know the one my daughter's in, she can purchase an extra fifteen feet off the back and put in a fence so she can create a rear yard in hers, but.
So you, you, the minute you step out of the condo.
You're on.
You're on somebody, you're on somebody else's.
You're on the condo property.
You're on the association's property.
That's not a bad thing, cause they maintain it.
Yeah, they maintain.
Well, I can understand why, cause there's a lot of absentee condo owners.
And there's usually more amenities in condo developments, clubhouses and swimming pools and so forth, so.
But they also like to go more higher.
They can go higher.
They like to go five to seven stories.
So I would say let's ax condominiums, that's my opinion.
Me too.
I don't see, given that there's no advantage in that, what relative to what the state's requiring of us, it's just opening Pandora's box unnecessarily, so.
Well, like you said, the development agreement will cover.
If, if anybody wanted to do condominium development, they could, they could come up with a development agreement in a mixed use zone.
And if we have to make a change at that time, we'll just revise the ordinance.
Yeah, let's, we're gonna ax the condominium stuff. So that was, everything in red was condominium.
That one hundred and.
Yeah, so we'll get, yeah, we'll get to that. I mean, so there's a few numbers I need to get to. We're back to guarantees and covenants, yeah, the open space one, so. Guarantees and covenants adequate guarantees shall be provided for permanent retention and maintenance of all open space areas created before final plan development approval is granted. A, open space guarantees, open space guarantees for all plan developments may include the following. One, the city may require the developer to furnish and record protective covenants which will guarantee the retention of the open land area, or the city may require the creation of a corporation granting beneficial, beneficial rights to the open space to all owners or occupants of the land within the development.
I got an editorial thing. Why did they use open land instead of open space since they've used that word every place?
Yeah, let's change it to open space.
It's just inconsistent. I mean, every other place I've looked on it, it says open space, so.
We'll change that. Okay. Um, then two, the developer shall develop all required open space. Maintenance of all open space shall also be the responsibility of the developer unless the city accepts dedication and approves the annexation of said property. Three, in case of private reservation, the open space to be reserved shall be protected against building development by conveying to the city as part of the condition of project approval, an open space easement over such open areas restricting the area against any future billing or use except as approved on the final development.
I really liked that part.
That was a good one.
Sneak a little accessory building or something on it, you know?
Yeah.
Tough shit out there.
Yep, yep.
Four, the care and maintenance of the area within such open space reservation shall be insured by the developer by establishing a private association or corporation responsible for such maintenance, which shall levy the cost thereof as an assessment on the property owners within the planned development. Ownership and tax liability of private open space reservations shall be established in all manner acceptable to the city and made a part of the conditions of the final plan approval. So that's just an HOA being developed.
We want HOA for every new.
No, but it, this, it gives them the, it gives them the opportunity to either give the property to the city to maintain, or if they maintain it, they can, they can start an HOA.
Okay.
So. No.
Well, that right up front it says may include the following, so that's right from the beginning.
And we wouldn't encourage an HOA.
No, but it's, it's available there if they want it. Maintenance of open space reservations shall be managed by a person, partnership, or a corporate entity in which there is adequate expertise and experience in property management to ensure that said maintenance is accomplished efficiently and at a high quality standard. So we don't want these develop, if there is an HOA, we don't want it looking like a.
We don't wanna hire a teenage kid.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't edge or anything like that.
Alright, so this next one is, there's a number in there that we have to come up, so this is talking about, we've got a development.
Can I go back, sorry?
Yeah, go back.
On five, I, maybe there's not a good, good or better way around this, but accomplished efficiently and at a high quality standard. I, I agree, but is that specific enough or is that too big?
I, no, I think it's, it's, no, I, I went over that too and I actually reworded it. It was like worded really weird in there, so I actually.
Those are changed up, loosey goosey words, but what else did you put there?
Let me take the word and out, I'm just, I'm just curious, I'm not an English major.
Well, for me, I just.
You could be, you could have it efficient and not be a high quality standard. In fact, it might be very efficient.
Loose version of high quality might be different from mine.
No, it, the vague, it's, it's one of those words where it's subject to interpretation.
Yes, but it's right.
But, but what you're doing is pointing a finger, I, I, you can't anticipate what the efficiency is, what you're measuring, and you can't anticipate the quality standard you're measuring. In other words, what would you put in its, in its place?
And it's more, and it's more gonna be, it's more gonna be measured by the residents of the development if it's in an HOA than it is anybody else.
I do like Lyle's idea though.
You have to take care of it.
This is a heads up statement, is what it is.
That's all it is.
I do like Lyle's idea to take out and, so that the maintenance is accomplished efficiently.
At a high quality.
Quality standard.
Yeah, that's good, we can do that.
I thought, yeah, I thought you was gonna replace it with or, and I didn't like that at all. Don't do that.
High quality, depends on.
I like, I like, I like the way that Lyle came up with that one, so property management to ensure that the maintenance is accomplished efficiently at a high quality standard.
Yep, good change.
Okay, so number six, subsequent amendment, so this is, we gotta give a little background on this. So the development is something that's taking some time to develop. There's several phases done in it, there's residents to live there. So that's, this one says subsequent amendments may be made to the plan by approval of the city council and upon a petition of two thirds or more of the property owners within the development. Any subsequent change or addition to the plans or use of land shall be submitted to the planning commission for its recommendation.
I have, I'll have a question about that, but let's go back to your percentage first.
Yeah.
But, what, what was there?
That was two thirds, and that's why I put it in here, it's like, do we wanna change that? Do we wanna leave it alone?
Two thirds majority is a.
Is a pretty common thing.
Pretty routine thing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Or are you gonna put three fourths or unanimous?
Fifteen.
Let's do a random.
Fifteen sixteenths.
Let's do, let's do twenty-four thirty-sevenths. Twenty-four thirty-sevenths.
No, that makes sense, cause then you've, you've definitely got the, all the, the majority of the homeowners.
Yeah, you gotta get, you haven't got the buy-in of the homeowners that are there, so.
Two three quarters.
You wanna go more than majority, cause you wanna push it away from one person's making his.
And you want a super majority, you don't, you don't, unlike just fifty-one percent, so I think two thirds is a super majority. So we think we're good with two thirds. You know?
Okay, my concern is subsequent amendments are approved by the city council upon a petition by blah blah blah. Then you say any subsequent change or addition to the plan is to be submitted to the planning commission, so somehow.
This is taken, we can change the planning commission up front and then the recommendation to the city council.
I, I would prefer that, cause it looks weird. It looks, while the city council does it if this happens, but if they come in subsequently, then it's routed to the planning.
Well, it's, it's saying that it's, the changes have to be approved by the city council.
Under any circumstance.
Under any circumstance, but before the city council gets it, the planning commission will get it, but.
So in essence, what you're saying is the city council doesn't have to participate in the first.
In the first section, but this is the way it came straight out of the other ordinance.
It, it looks awkward.
So we can, we can word it, so the planning commission is up front and then the.
Well, is there a way to word this? Because I, I kinda like what they're thinking here. Okay, is there a way to word this that, that two, they have to present a petition of two thirds of the residents to the city council before.
That's true.
They make application to the planning commission for changes.
I was, I was reading, so I was.
It's okay.
I wasn't listening to it.
So here's the thought. They have to present a petition of two thirds of the, of the residents for a potential change.
Right.
Okay, to the city council.
And not to the planning commission.
The planning commission.
And then the city council would then either say yes or no with the planning.
But that's another way it reads.
Correct.
But when you get into the actual amendments.
Agreed.
It routes through planning commission.
Agreed, hundred percent.
That's not the way this reads.
No, no, I understand that.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, 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 no, I understand, it doesn't read that way.
That makes sense, they should be petitioning the planning commission for it anyway.
They should be petitioning the city council.
And then any amendment subsequent or otherwise is routed through.
Through the planning commission and then recommended to the city council.
After assigned by the city council.
Yeah.
Right, so we can, that's standard language.
Yeah, we'll wordsmith that around, so, but basically the gist of it is, is there of what we want.
They can, they can, they can petition the city council for changes.
And then they're routed through our normal sequence.
To the cycle.
If the city council accepts those changes, then they're routed through.
And the city council makes an assignment for us to do the thing and then it comes back.
That's right. That's why, that's why it comes to you first and then that initiates the process.
Yeah, if we say no, wipe off.
Then it's done.
So yeah, you can, you know, put something in there that if it's, you know, that it's denied, then it's done, you know, I'll let you wordsmith it.
I will, I'll wordsmith it.
I'll let you.
So. Yeah, if these go to the housing authority instead of the city council.
No.
It's not mixed use.
No, this is, because it's a, uh, it's a, and we talked about this before, because it's a.
It's a, it's an.
An overlay.
It's a trump of a zone, so it really relates to zone decisions.
It doesn't go through the housing committee.
I'm sorry, forgive me. Yes, PD overlay. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
It's a later zone over.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can I, can I throw two little things?
I saw myself in a rut.
In the objective, I would, I would still really like to have at least a reference to the modern income housing portion of the general plan. Cause that would be another reason why we're gonna, would consider a PD overlay.
Where did you want that in?
Into a purpose and objective.
Yeah.
So in essence, it addresses one of the requirements of the blah 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 blah, that kind of a thing.
So we want, we don't even wanna do a PD overlay unless we need more open space and or uh, housing strategies at that point, otherwise.
That works, we're, we're addressing this PD overlay.
So you can put it.
Because.
Our motivation, our motivation, yeah, that's right.
Purpose and objectives.
You can rezone for densities necessary, the rezone is happening for PD overlay zone. If the density is necessary to facilitate the production of moderate income housing. As the implementation of far west city updated R one fifteen zone, so seventeen twenty-five fifty to allow to twenty percent smaller lots for specific requirements to provide moderate income housing.
Where, where, you reading that from another? Oh.
Oh.
Oh, I, I knew you was reading it from something, I just.
So that was the objectives, but.
We just, yeah, we just need to.
For you, Greg.
So in the, in the C three zone, we put some verbiage in there that in order for those apartments to go in, they can only go in if it satisfies one of the strategies of the, and you, you can reference the chapter eight of the, um, general plan. And that way, if the chapter eight changes over time, they're still having to satisfy the strategies of the moderate income housing portion of the general plan.
So I will wordsmith that into the purpose and objective paragraph.
I think that's all you need to do, so the, the objective, correct me if I'm wrong, the whole point of this is either to get more open space.
Yep.
Or.
To meet an, meet an objective.
Yeah. So they'll understand, that's the drive, that, those are the drivers.
Yep. Alright, back to the bond. So I don't know what the city requires for bonding as far as thing, but let's read through this. Performance bond, in order to ensure that the planned development will be constructed to completion in an acceptable manner, the applicant shall post a performance bond or escrow account with the city recorder approved by the city engineer in the amount equal to one hundred twenty-five percent of the estimated cost of construction and installation of all required landscaping, parking, and street improvements, including paving, curb, sidewalks, water, sewer lines, parks, playgrounds, recreation facilities, and other amenities shown on the final development plan. Said applicant shall also file a schedule of anticipated completion dates for such improvements. In the event that the improvements are not completed in a reasonable conformance with the said schedule, the city may undertake to complete the improvements and pay for such improvements from the bond.
This is out of my area.
That's out of my area too.
I don't, I, it looks good to me, but what do I know?
This came, this came from the other ordinance from Clearfields, so.
Hundred and fifty.
So.
Just to make sure for, for inflation and all that, yeah.
Do we have the, do we bond, have them bond anything when they?
On all subdivisions, they bond.
And how much do they bond?
Um, relative to the cost. This, this is a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, we already have those things in the engineering and all that practice stuff. They either, right now, they have to have a bond. The other strategy that they've been using is for, uh, some, what is it, the credit.
Letter of credit, the credit.
Letter of credit. In other words.
From a bank or.
From a bank, meaning if they don't have the cash, then the bank's gonna cover it.
One of the problems we ran into was the banks wouldn't cover the letters.
They're harder to collect, correct? We've heard that from the legislative committee at Utah. So.
I'd prefer not going that route myself.
Right.
But the other option has been, and cities are having a hard time collecting all this.
Yeah, but if you take letters of credit out of any of the ordinances or verbiage allowed, then they're stuck with a line of credit, or not, a line of credit or cash, well, a cashier's check. So the letter of credit's tough, I mean, we ran into it all the time with, you know, banks saying, oh no, we're not paying that. Because.
There, there's somewhere it has more deep in it where it has to be satisfied.
Yeah, so I like this bond thing, but I'm not sure the percentage of the bond.
I'm not sure either. I'm, I'm, it's somewhere, we can talk to our engineering and find out what that is.
What you're doing is you're, whatever the time horizon, you wanna protect yourself against inflation.
Yeah, it's like, okay, if they, if they bail out, we'll still be able to get to it.
Yeah.
Can I get, can, can I give you an assignment then, Mayor, to just give me a, give me a number, find out from engineering or whatever? Send me a number, and I'll plug it in.
Andrew, did you look at any other performances or was this?
A hundred, there was someone that said hundred percent, and most of them were, were around hundred to a hundred and twenty-five percent that I seen, so.
They do the extra twenty-five for, for cost of living?
Yeah, well, I'm, no, I, you want that in.
I like, I like a hundred and fifty percent.
That seems. You like fifteen sixteenths too.
I still like twenty-four thirty-sevenths.
That's right.
I think a hundred and twenty-five percent has got plenty of safety built into it.
I think so too, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, they have to, they, the developers, when they post these bonds, have to put together a cost schedule and present it to the engineer, a cost analysis. And so the, the engineer then double checks that cost analysis before they allow them to post the bonds. So. But if we can get rid of the line of credit.
Yeah, the, the letter of credit just seems hokey to me.
See, where, where I used to work was, you posted a cashier's check, okay, uh, line of credit or, uh, an escrow or a letter of credit. And whenever we had the letter of credit, the banks fought us. Because they're not, like, they're not getting the fees from the builder.
I don't think we should invite any problems for ourselves.
I don't either. So I, I would say if you go with a cashier's check or an escrow account and eliminate the letter of credit, you're gonna save the city a lot of headaches in the long run, I think.
Put those two options and to put the word only.
Yeah, so in order.
And I mean, you could even get to the point where you limit the banks that they deal with.
Performance bond or escrow, yeah, so I think we just leave that, we don't have letter of credit.
We don't even put it as an option.
No.
I mean, if you just leave this as an option, that's pretty, you don't need to say more than that, do you?
It has to be this or that.
Right.
You don't, you don't, don't open the door for the Pandora's box for the letters of credit.
Yeah, we're not gonna add that in, and that just.
And this is where Lindsay and the office staff would come into play.
Lindsay would, no.
She would a hundred percent, but.
She's the one that collects the money.
And she may limit them to certain banks, I don't know. I know we gave them seven, we only allowed them to, to bond with seven banks, seven different banks.
I would say go to the office, let them.
Sure.
Use their experience to tell you what to do.
I would talk to Lindsay.
Mayor's just going to check.
Well, Mayor, yeah, he's already been given the assignment, so.
He said, he just walked out to go check on.
Yeah, he'll probably pull up another one.
He'll probably send Lindsay a text.
Yeah.
I think a hundred and twenty-five percent would be adequate.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, if not, then what we do is we, we have them put in an estimate of construction costs to the engineer for a review.
Okay, so that's pretty much wraps this up, okay.
Mayor's back.
Based on then the engineer's estimate is what it is. And if sin warrants, it's gotta be a cash bond, then that's, that can be that way. Cause what they usually do is on a subdivision, and it can be calculated based on what's remaining. Let's say they got part of it done. Then of course, they would only be liable for what's not done.
So you're saying the hundred and twenty-five percent is okay to leave in?
He said to leave it to the engineer's estimate.
Okay. Let's see engineering.
Because the state of Utah also has a law that the developer can go in and start installing the improvements.
The engineer's estimate? He just wants to put the engineer's estimate in there?
That's what he's saying for.
Okay.
And that's what in fact you're doing? That's, that's our practice.
That's what we do now.
Okay.
Yeah, I guarantee you, he's probably looking at his estimates at about a hundred and twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
They're putting, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be conservative, yeah, they're.
And when they have, so like if anybody bails on something, they wind up going, okay, we're gonna take that.
Okay.
That escrow and finish it up for you, thank you.
Yeah, I can wordsmith that in there.
And you can just go from like, you can go from escrow to a cashier's check.
We're eliminating that altogether.
We want bond, escrow, or cashier's check?
Yeah.
Well, escrow is paperwork.
Bond deals and stuff.
So if you come in with a, with a, with a cash, cashier's check that covers the whole cost.
Right there, this whole thing, we're, we're eliminating.
About condominiums.
Okay, just wanna let you know what, what's going on.
We haven't ever talked about condominium developments, and so.
Well, I, this is me, I don't think we need to get that much detailed about each little piece, cause it's like, they're gonna come in with a plan.
That's what we were saying, if they, if they, if they wanna come in with a plan and we approve that plan and they have a development agreement, then.
They can do it that way.
We're good.
Yeah, cause the whole point is so that they can.
Yeah, we don't have to suggest it to them.
I think you've already got it here. So if you look at this, the city recorder approved by the city engineer in the amount equal to the estimate of the construction, installation of all required landscaping. So if you just take out, uh, the hundred and twenty-five percent and of, equal to the estimated cost of construction.
Yep, that's right.
Do you have it in there with cash bond?
It is a, uh, it says performance bond or escrow account.
What is a performance bond?
It's just a bond, yeah.[1791.72]
I would put, I would put cash.
You want cash, cash bond?
Cash bond or escrow.
I just don't understand that term.
Performance becomes, I think performance becomes your your letter of credit.
Yeah, so let's do cash bond.
Performance bond is a letter of credit.
And if we have it in ordinance.
So we place performance with cash.
Oh, yeah, we got cash bond or escrow account.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that way, there's, they know it up front.
Sure, yeah.
Can you hang it coming here?
I would do well. So we're basically done with that, and the next step on this is you fix that.
I'll fix it all up.
Fix it, and then email it out to everybody, and then.
You guys hash it over and.
Then what we'll do is I'll contact Geneva when we're all set and done, and let her know where we're at, and we need to set, I'll have her.
We don't need to do this, we don't need to route this to another work session, do we?
I don't think so.
That's just unnecessary.
What I want to do is have a joint work session with city council.
I think it's just me finish it up, get the draft out, everybody.
No, we don't need a a work session here, but we talked about having a joint work session with city council over.
Okay, that's fine, too.
I think that's the intention, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's up to.
Well, I just want, I guess, how much heartburn the city's gonna have that we've been doing all this in their absence.
I think it would be.
That's the reason for a joint work session. That's the only, it's a courtesy gesture.
Yeah, I I think a joint work session to basically lay this out and sell it would be prudent.
Because because when we vote on, it's gotta go to the city council.
Learned a lesson.
Do we need to run this to Liam first, too, let him, how about him take it?
Yeah, fix it.
For us to meet again, that doesn't make.
There's no reason for us to meet.
We're done.
So you make the changes, send it to Liam, and then if he gives the stamp of approval, send it to us, then we'll set, I just feel like that we need to meet with the joint session with city council just to, because we vote on it, then it goes to the city council anyway.
And that can be a ten or fifteen minute meeting.
Right. But like I said, once we vote on it, and then it goes to.
You make your recommendation.
Yeah, and it goes to the city council, I want to have, and I know Geneva feels the same way, to cover ourselves.
You don't want it coming back.
No, that's why we'll do it this way.
Let's not do that.
Okay, so.
If there's any questions from the city council, let's answer them before you make your recommendation.
Yeah, before we act.
So do you wanna set up one for uh first of the year?
Yeah, all of it.
As soon as we can meet again, I think.
Which meeting does it precede?
Yeah, we all have another.
They would probably want it to precede their meeting.
Right, the city council canceled their meeting next week.
No, but I'm saying they would probably want it to precede their meeting, not us, and they don't have to come for an extra meeting.
Yeah, I'm thinking that we could just set it with the city council before, you know what, I'm just thinking, we could probably get it on, maybe set it for the second week, the second meeting, city council meeting.
Cover it to restrictions for condos.
Why not the first?
January second.
Why not the first? What's holding it up? I mean, why don't we?
I'm on Christmas vacation.
Well. Okay, that's, that's a good reason. Because if anything goes awry, we wanna have a.
Right, my, this is my thought, okay, for everybody's pretty well zoning out for Christmas holiday anyway, okay? So you gotta send it to Liam, once, once he's reviews it, then it's gotta go to us, if there's any changes, we gotta bounce it around. My thought is to have, hold it uh before the city council meeting, the second, the second city council meeting in January.
Before, before we.
I, that's, no, no, let me.
No, no, before you take action.
No, what I'm saying is, let's hold the work session before city council that night. We can always table it.
It won't be on your agenda for approval.
It'll be on your agenda.
I would prefer to have it on the agenda for our second meeting in January, which means we need the joint session before city council on the first.
And I'm saying, that's not gonna be ready by the first.
No, it won't be ready.
I am not available.
This is what I would. It's not, it's.
It's gonna make a lot more sense to put it in front of your meeting than ours.
I think it's, yeah, I think, well, yeah, I think we're making a big deal.
Kinda noticed that.
I think we're making.
But if, but don't put it on the agenda for our, oh, oh.
Right, that's, it's not an action item on your agenda, it's just a topic item in the work session.
It won't be on the agenda, it won't be on the agenda until the first city council meeting in March, or February.
February.
Yeah, but if we hold it before this.
That works, that gives us plenty.
That's what, I think we're trying to complicate the matters too much, so. And that way it'll give time, everybody can review and recover for the holidays. Yeah, we'll have to set a public hearing, do we need a, uh, do we have to, do we have a public hearing before the?
Well, there has to be one.
Yeah, but.
Public hearing in the same, the same meeting where you take action precede it with a public hearing.
So.
I I don't think we need.
And it may not even come back to us, after we get done with the work session, if there's compartments, then it doesn't even come back to.
Get it to Liam.
I just wanted to have the public hearing.
Well, that's a good point there, that's, that makes sense.
Maybe we can.
Which would be the second meeting, your meeting in January.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll have the joint.
Have a work session in our second.
We will have the public hearing this, the the last Thursday of the, the last of January.
Have the public hearing and then consider your recommendation in that meeting.
It'll be on the.
We become two in February to city council.
On the first meeting in February for the city, okay.
Or, you know, like I said, we don't need to rush it, we just need to be.
There's no reason for it.
We just basically have that time between.
Yes.
Our meeting and our decision.
I'll have a conversation with Geneva during the next, I'll just fill her in when she gets back. Okay, Lou, you've got the floor.
Well, it's not Lou, it's Greg and and all of these, there's four of us there, so. I'm just, do you have in front of you our thing we had last time, or should I just read them to you one by one? This is, this, we never ever got to it last time. Uh, David J. basically created bullets of the things that we had sort of were recommending as the housing committee. Yes, okay, and the idea is we're gonna present our recommendations to you and let you react to it, okay?
You guys can share.
Try them in whenever it's necessary, okay, the first one is a request for an EADU does not constitute the creation of a flag lot and subdivision of an existing residential property. So we're we're making sure that nobody confuses this, this is not a subdivision. This is an accessory building on one lot, okay, any problems with that?
Nope.
Okay. The EADU is to be constructed not closer than six feet behind and not to the side of an existing primary residence. I'll change the language a little bit in that, but basically it has to be six feet behind the the rear line of the building and uh can't be to the side of the building, yeah.
What if you have very little property behind you and a ton on the side, cul-de-sac wedge-shaped lots? I got plenty of room to put an EADU.
What we were trying to do is get it behind the primary dwelling.
Yeah.
Well, usually you have a rear line where there's room in front there, even in a cul-de-sac.
I don't have, I I've got twenty feet between the back of my house and the fence, so. But I've got a ton of property on each side.
No, that makes sense.
It can't be behind the building line.
Can't be behind, it won't be behind the build line of the house, it'll be on the side of the house. It can be behind the front plane of the house, but it can't be behind the back plane.
All circumstances, we could make sure that happened.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no way, because we say that with all accessory buildings, you can't.
We're even allowed, well, if you look at, if you treat that like a corner to some degree, like a corner lot, because we talked about corner lots. Where they could be off to the side.
Mm-hmm. Now, you've got enough space to do that and have parking to the side.
Yeah, I got plenty of room.
So you've got a a very na, a shallow, wide lot, so your frontage is enormous.
So I've got like fifty feet in the front where it meets the cul-de-sac, and a wedge is out, I've got three hundred feet along my back fence line. But I've got behind the back of the house to the fence about twenty feet.
I'm wondering how you got that done, it's supposed to be thirty.
It might be thirty, but it's still not big enough to, still not big enough to do an EADU.
Whoa, whoa.
Well. Sorry, Darren, I'm creeping on you, so. And put six feet, and to, and to keep the, and to keep the.
Intent was to try to keep this in the backyard.
Yeah.
And.
You're gonna have to make exceptions for cul-de-sac lots and corner lots, then.
Well, we talked about corner lots.
Corner lots, we already have, you know, we have corner lots, we can provide a second access point, meet the EDA setbacks and the lot placement requirements, so.
Do you have some type of consideration for sh, basically short backyards?
Well, we limited the size.
Rather than do that, why not just say if you've got the space to the side, behind the front line of the house.
This is my house, and my lot.
Okay, let's just think.
I got plenty of room.
We have no objection to a detached garage.
Right, right.
So I'm I'm following your line of reasons, so the detached garage looks like a second dwelling in some cases, so how does this differ substantially?
That's not, that's not behind, though, that's to the side. It won't, it won't be behind the plane of the house, if you.
No, behind the rear build line is, you know, that's what we do with accessory dwelling units at all, not, I mean, any accessory building, there's this rear line in the house.
Yeah, but I can't go back six feet and then you have, and then you have the setback.
Be a three-foot wide accessory.
It's accessory. I'm saying it's on the side, but it won't be.
It depends on, see, your problem is, we're taking that front, that the the rear line of the house, we're projecting it straight, and you're on a cul-de-sac where it's not straight. Our concern is more the distance from the street than it is, than it is, so if it could conform with the the curvature of the cul-de-sac.
With the detached structures.
But you understand, that that would accomplish what we were trying to do.
I'm just saying that I can't be six feet behind the back build plane of the house and four feet off the back property line.
That property behind it.
Be uh behind, you could take that.
I do, I do need to move my fence back about four feet.
You know, donate it to him.
So. The basin right now, but.
So what if, what if, what if the line, the right, take that corner of your house, this one, yeah, and then just go on a diagonal, that keep, what we're trying to do is keep the distance to the street from the back line of your house, so maybe that's the way I'd word it. It can't, it can, it has to be at least the distance, the distance from the street has to be at least the distance to the back line of your house to the street.
For instance, if you have a thirty-foot setback.
That would solve your problem.
Because we are, we are, don't we already do something for cul-de-sacs on setback?
Yeah, with regards to detached structures.
No, I'm talking about, oh, for the houses we do.
Well, what is, what does it say? What's the word, you remember?
I don't remember.
It's the intent, though, to keep the distance from the street.
Yeah.
At a, at a certain distance.
Yeah.
So you got.
Because you mentioned.
Basically, the distance, you got your thirty-foot setback from the street, and then the thickness of your house.
Right, and whatever that distance is, that sets the.
What I remember is we went down the property line so far and then straight across. That was your setback line.
Yeah, there was something to do with cul-de-sacs.
That's what I remember.
If this wasn't accessory dwelling, if it was somebody's spare garage or shop, they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't have to have it that far back, would they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I remember, Lou, okay, and Mayor.
I can't.
Is you go up that property line so far. And then you come straight across.
Yeah, there's something like that.
And make, that then is your front yard setback.
Well, but, but that's the front yard setback.
It's your front yard.
We'd have to add to it the building depth.
Yeah, there's something we can do along the lines of.
But I think we ought to start with that, and that would accommodate a curved road. And what it, it would, it would also satisfy what we're gonna do, and that's, we don't want it to be any closer to the road than the rear of your house, whatever that distance is.
I thought I mentioned that, so let's say you've got a porch or patio that comes off.
Those aren't counted.
It's the back plane of your house.
That's your foundation.
It's the, it's the foundation, yeah, yeah.
What if, so my house, for example, is like that, though, it's got a part in the back that jets out with foundation, is that the back, or is it?
Is it, is it, is it covered, or is it, is it closed?
Is it, is Furbus playing back like he has a?
Oh, well, okay, per color, I can go get naked if you want, it's thirty feet from the foundation to the property.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of folks, like in my neighborhood, they did a lot of what they call cannoli or things to make their house larger, like, like about four feet, so you could.
You did on mine.
Thirty feet, but they didn't take up that thirty feet because the foundation is still thirty feet.
So my foundation is is thirty feet, but I got a couple of big bay windows that hang out over, over the foundation.
It does that.
They don't count, yes.
So, and that measurement would come from.
All right, Matt, if you did something like that.
Do is look at what we've got for the accessory dwelling units and, but it would accommodate what you're doing, and I, I, and it would not, well, the rest of the committee, would that bother any of you? I think we just wanted to make sure it wasn't jettying out.
No, no, I think you're right.
I think you're, if we're consistent with just dwelling, accessory.
That's what I say, go look at the language there.
And the thing is, is there's not gonna be that many homes, we're not having anybody coming in with an ADU application now.
Yeah.
Even when we do, the chances of us having one of his are pretty small.
But there are similar lots throughout the city in cul-de-sac lots.
Might as well anticipate this, and if it's already built into our verbiage in the, in the accessory dwelling unit, just, let's just borrow it.
Yeah, because we have something like this for front yard setbacks on a cul-de-sac.
Right.
Okay, then that's, that's.
All right, can I ask one more question, sorry?
No, you can ask as many questions as you want.
Yeah, so in the case you've got somebody who's not on a cul-de-sac, but they're on a, like a rectangular-shaped yard, but it's like a corner lot, it's wide, not, not deep, do we give those kind of lots any kind of?
We already addressed that in here.
It's somewhere in there, corner lots, twelve.
I don't know if that would.
Does it have to be a corner lot, or can it be any wide but not deep uh yard? Jason, yeah. Are you asking about me?
No.
No, I'm trying to think of, because it's, well, the way we. Because you can't disturb more than twenty percent of your rear yard. Okay?
But if you've got a side yard, it's not a corner lot, that's what we get now.
No. It'll be only be the corner lots. Because otherwise you'd put it in your side yard, nah, no, we want it six feet behind the house.
Okay. Unless you can't get it there.
Well, in your case, in effect, it is, depending upon how, which part of the house you're looking at, it's.
Yeah.
It's just that the, you're not measuring from a straight line, you know, yours is a, your state's a little bit different.
But you know, if I, if I did something like that, so where the corner here is behind the plane of the house and did a diagonal.
No, it'd have to be square.
What? You're killing it, man.
Well, you.
You can't win.
You don't wanna make it easy.
You missed the fifteen sixteens discussion earlier, so.
Okay.
He's on a roll tonight, so you gotta.
I don't even wanna introduce you guys to my lot, I don't, I don't think you would.
I don't think you would.
Yes, so, so Greg has a, Greg has a remnant lot in the cul-de-sac. It's all, it's like, it's a triangle, it's so weird shape.
It's a triangle lot.
Okay, so with, with, with the changes that we've discussed, we, I think we've come to some.
Yeah.
What we'll have to do is take all this, and we're gonna have to make it compatible with what we've already got in the code for regular accessory dwellings, or, uh, accessory.
Single family setbacks and accessory dwellings, yeah.
How about the third one? It must be a single family unit, slab-on-grade construction, no duplex basement, or multi-family facilities. Any problem with that?
No.
Okay?
Does this prevent it from being two stories?
Yep. It does later.
Okay.
Okay. Number four, must share the utility services with the primary residence. Okay? Okay?
Yes.
Well, yes and no.
Yeah, that got, that got discussed. That's, yeah, so we've got to change that. What was it? Was it Bonavista? Which one was it?
Well, actually, I'm not sure. There's still discussion, we had some discussion this morning, because Nate actually got a hold of, uh, the sewer district, and the sewer district is, you know, basically, if they're behind the house, you, if it's not behind the house, has to have its own connection to the sewer. So, we're not allowing them to the side of the house, so it can be a.
How about Nate giving us a sentence for that?
We could ask him.
Yeah.
No, I mean, he's gonna probably correct what we do anyway, because he lives and breathes that, so. Just give us a sentence.
That's, because he's dealing with.
That's right.
Two days all the time.
So.
He can probably better work.
No, that's my, that's my. Okay, we'll, we'll get that back, so that's an assignment to them.
I will take.
Okay, so that's to be revised by them. The, 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 uh, the, the gist of what we're trying to do, you do understand? I mean, there's no objection to that by the planning commission, right?
No.
Okay. Okay. Uh, shall require city conditional use permit and must meet and comply with all city building code requirements for residential structures. We absolutely.
Include the.
Public works people basically demand that, and I think it's one hundred percent.
The setbacks and everything.
When they go in, they don't want anybody trying to jerry-rig some existing building or.
Chalk the shed is not an ADU.
Yeah, so, so that was put in there, and that, I think, was very important. Setback and boundary distances, uh, fifteen feet, that's from the back and, back and sides, and then we've already talked about the six feet. Okay?
Six feet from the building, fifteen feet side yard, fifteen feet rear yard.
Okay, that, this would be, would put this.
What's the regular setbacks on a regular, is that ten feet, isn't it?
For accessory, uh, for accessory building?
Or regular hall.
It's, well, it's, right now, it's a total of twenty-four, one side.
It's ten and, it's ten and fifteen, isn't it? Or ten and twenty, ten and fourteen, yeah.
Or twelve and twelve. The whole thing has to be twenty-four. One side could be no less than ten.
We were, what we were protecting against the less than ten part.
Right.
That was the, that was.
Nothing could be less than ten, but the total setbacks for a house have to be twenty-four.
And you can split between one side or the other.
Yeah, it could be, it could be ten, fourteen, or twelve and twelve.
Okay, okay.
As long as it adds up to twenty-four.
We've, we've seen so much of this, you forget.
What we were trying to is, we'll let you do ten on one side, but you can't do it on both sides.
Right.
That was, that was what was driving the.
Total of twenty-four.
Yep.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, uh, that's.
Rework that.
I, I know these setbacks, because that's my house. I meant all the setbacks.
We'll work, we need to, basically, it'd be working this, make it consistent with the verbiage we have in our code.
Sure.
David just jot down the concepts here, so understand that this is intended to be the actual language in the code. Okay, um, um, let's see, where are we at? So, we got five, six setbacks and boundary distances, okay, we covered that. Seven, may not occupy more than twenty percent of the space within the setback limitation, okay? And that's already spelled out in the code, so we did, we'll just use the very same language there.
Basically, if you have a large shop back there, that eats up to twenty percent, you don't get an ADU.
And so, you can't just pretend it's all, you know, if you've consumed a good chunk of that accessory dwelling unit space already.
But you could put it inside.
If you have a giant shop.
Yeah.
And you want to put an ADU in it.
And it meets code.
And it means a livable space.
What they can't do is convert a pole barn to something like this, okay?
Right.
Because there's no, it wouldn't meet billing standards.
A dwelling unit.
It has to be standards for a dwelling.
Even if it's a, even if, what, it's only a portion of the whole pole barn, if that makes sense.
So, they can't put up some walls and everything like that.
Unless it passes code.
Got to have foundations underneath it.
So, basically, you gotta have at least twenty percent of open space in your yard. It can't occupy more than, you have to, yeah.
That's true of all buildings.
Exactly, yeah.
So, that's gonna eliminate it just outright for some, and for people that have already got a big accessory dwelling, or accessory building, that pretty much.
I don't.
Yeah.
Seals their fate.
It's not a building.
There's one that I have curiosity about.
I don't know.
What do you have curiosity about?
Whether a swimming pool, in-ground swimming pool, would be considered part of the twenty percent.
Swimming, swimming pool is a mistake.
That's a subjective opinion.
You talk to everybody that's put it in, they love it first year. Talk to them fifteen years later and see what they say about it.
Well, like I said, I just, I've always wondered that question, whether a pool counted as part of the twenty percent.
That, I don't know, we'll have to.
That's not even, it's not even a building, I mean.
Backyard amenity.
Yeah.
The only part of that would be the, would be the pump house part.
That's a building.
That's a building.
I'm asking the question, that's all I'm doing, is asking the question. So, I don't know the answer to that, so that's, I'm just curious.
If you did that, would have to, you know, people who dig a hole for their trampings.
I just wasn't watching my watch, it's twenty-five hours.
Yeah.
One question before I go any further. Uh, I know we're gonna, gonna close it down anyway. You guys read the email I sent, right?
No.
Yeah.
About?
About one of the, Janita.
Oh, the.
I didn't forward it to you, yeah.
Oh, no, I got it.
Okay.
Oh, I did read that, yes.
I'm not gonna read the letter. I talked to Janita, she says, we don't typically read the letter, so.
The, the one, the sting you forwarded to us?
Yes, I'm not gonna read that letter, because you guys obviously read it and the other things, so. Anyway, so I just wanted to make sure you got that before we.
It's a neighbor dispute.
This, this is, because it's a business, this would fall under the category of a residential business, require a residential business license, and would require, we have to meet all the requirements for residential business, which is invisibility to the neighborhood.
So, anyway, we'll discuss it, I just want to make sure you guys saw that, so I don't.
Is this the kennel?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, can, yeah, I've got the kennels.
So, the size limitations are limited to four to five hundred square feet and a maximum height to twenty feet to the peak.
And we got down, we, it's four hundred, not five hundred, right?
Four hundred to five hundred.
Well.
You don't put a minimum and have a range.
I'm just saying, so.
Sorry, that doesn't, that doesn't work. Either one or the other.
Two, five hundred.
I'm just reading how the notes are, yeah.
Where, where did we come? We went.
I think it came down at five hundred.
I don't care myself.
Do a five hundred.
Okay.
I'd say four hundred, because you think about people who, like, use RVs and whatnot, like.
Yeah.
They're just, they're not that big, and you can still do a lot in them.
Well, that was my argument, in four hundred, you can have a liv- livable cottage. So, I was, I was leaning in the smaller size.
And, and one, one example is, you know, and I think, I would encourage everybody to go out to, look at the, out there at Montana Shed. They have some of these, go look at them, look at their footprint and see if that's something you would like.
Cool stuff out there with the residential.
What's the, uh, what's the argument against four hundred?
Hundred to five, I lived in a nine hundred square foot house, my first home, and it was me and my wife, and we're all, and one child, and it was pretty crowded.
Okay.
I have a nine hundred square feet.
But I'm thinking, have you got a single elderly parent? And I've been in apartments where that's.
Yeah, you would have got both parents, that, I mean.
Well, that's the minimum, but I'm saying, when you say you can't make one, that's.
No, four hundred's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
All the, all the health department requires is you have a bedroom, and a bathroom, and a living center. Which could be your.
Kitchen area, yeah, kitchen area.
Living room and your kitchen combined.
Yes, and that's what I've seen.
This is my travel trailer. I'm just kidding. Okay, it's seriously, we got four minutes.
Okay, so we'll pick up nine.
In the next, yeah, in the next work session.
We'll pick up at single family, single story.
Oh, and I got an email that, uh, yeah, you're both up. I got an email from, uh, what's his, Buck and Brandon, and he.
No alternates tonight, but.
No. Geneva's gone, and I'm covering, uh, and Brandon sent an email while during the meeting.
There's people waiting out there in the foyer, they can come in.
You guys can come on in.
You don't need to drive this bus?
Okay. Oh, wait a minute. Can you do the prayer?
Yeah.
Can you do the pledge? I gotta find my agenda now, sorry. I got, I got my whole, oh, here it is, right here, yeah, sorry. Little unorganized. I told Geneva I was gonna purposely mess up, so she'll know how valuable she is. Okay, um. Yeah, one minute, we can start, I can just start now.
Want to figure out your volunteers?
No, you got them, yeah, sorry.
You're ahead of me, sorry.
Okay. Brandon's off, yeah, he sent an email while during the meeting.
Say he's stuck at work.
Yeah, he's got deadlines, yeah.
He works with pools, so, you know.
Yeah, he does, he can answer that question. I'm just kidding. Okay, so we, yeah, we can't even start till Greg gets here, so. Yeah.
Pretty hard.
Okay. That's true, this meeting come to order, uh, the planning commission. Darren Rollins will say the pledge, and Greg will, Greg Pierce will say the prayer.
Please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind Father in heaven, regret for the opportunity that we have to come here to, uh, attend this planning commission. Regret for, uh, the opportunity to serve the residents of Far West City. Uh, we ask thee to keep, um, the residents in mind in any of the decisions and actions that we make tonight, and help us to, uh, be wise and, um, to make the best decisions possible, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Okay, um, for, um, public comments, do we have anybody from the body or from the, how many public comments that are not related, anything's on the agenda? Hey, seen none, we report from the city council, Tim.
Hey, we had two meetings since your last meeting. Um, I'll report on the first one, that's where most of the activity actually took place. Um, we met on, uh, the twenty-first of November. We had one public comment from, uh, resident Darren Burnett, uh, shared some comments regarding the Black Pine development, and also some letters of, uh, concern from other citizens. The council then received a report from planning commission, uh, regarding their work in subsequent meetings, which, uh, we appreciate, uh, as much as you guys do. Your work sessions prior to each of your regular meetings are very efficient and accomplish quite a bit, we appreciate that. Uh, the council tabled a request for, from Peak Power for a business license due to, uh, lack of any representation by that particular company. The council approved a business license, uh, request for a massage therapy from Feathers of Heather. So, that was approved. Council then discussed the West Creek Master Development Agreement. After a lengthy discussion, the item was tabled. Um, council approved the Knight Center Commercial PUD subdivision recommended by the planning commission. Um, then we went into report on assignments. Um, my report basically regarded the, uh, Legislative Policy Committee, uh, from the Utah League, and, uh, what they expect to see in upcoming legislation, uh, which will be, I think, this next coming year, uh, will be primarily housing and transportation. So, we'll watch those real close and keep you informed as we can with regards to what we see coming out of the legislature. Katie reported on the mosquito abatement district and their process of reviewing their upcoming budgets. They don't currently plan on any increase in their service costs. Boyd reported the same for the Weber Fire District, and they also do not plan on and/or anticipate any tax increase for the Fire District, uh, in the coming year. Uh, David reported on the progress from the youth city council. They've added a couple more youth to their council. Um, it's finally getting up to the point where they can start, uh, functioning like a, a good youth city council should. Bob reported, um, on the CERT program, and that Lou, uh, Wakeart would be retiring from his, uh, leadership position, however, he'll stay involved to some degree. Uh, he also reported on the sewer districts, uh, meetings with regards to forecasting upcoming requirements and needs for the, uh, sewer district. No, their budgets were not, uh, in discussion as of yet, so we don't know what the sewer district plans for upcoming years for our budget goes. Uh, the mayor expressed his appreciation, uh, to those who were involved in the Veterans Day ceremony. It turned out very well. He also reported, uh, that he attended a pre-construction meeting on Phase One of the Four Thousand North Street project, uh, that it would start in early January, and with the anticipated funding from WACOG and federal, we, we project to see that completed before the end of summer. Uh, he also mentioned that the Trellis Foundation had obtained enough funding to complete a parking area at the Twenty-seventh Street Trailhead, and that the foundation is looking for more participation and membership, uh, in the coming year. Uh, the council then adjourned at seven twenty. That was the November meeting. Uh, we met again last week in, on December fifth, was an extremely short meeting. There were no public comments. Um, after conducting the regular business, uh, we did hear, um, from, uh, the, uh, the new employee recognition program that is being presented to us. It was, uh, very well put together, and, uh, we anticipate that will go forward, um, for the employees. We've not had that in the past, and it's, I think, a good thing to reward the employees. We have good employees, long-lasting, um, dedicated employees, and we need to recognize them for that. We canceled our December nineteenth meeting, and, uh, and that was pretty much, we adjourned. Any questions?
Perfect. Okay, thanks, Tim. Okay, business items, uh, set a public hearing to consider the request of a conditional use for, permit for a kennel license for, uh, Sofoni Parkin located twenty-three eighteen North, twenty-three hundred West. Do I have a motion?
I see, I recommend we open a public hearing to consider the request.
Motion by Greg. Second by Darren. Okay, we are now in a public hearing. Okay. Sofoni, would you please come up? Yep, tell us what you're doing.
So, am I just telling you, like, what?
Yes, uh-huh. Pull that mic down, so they can get you know, there you go, thank you.
So, I pretty much just, like, pet sit for people while they're out of town. Um, and so, I'm kind of just trying to do that more offici- like officially, I guess, by getting a business license for it, so that it's, like, for tax purposes and stuff. Um, I watch, like, about, like, no more than four dogs at any one given time, and, yeah. Sorry, is there?
No, no, this is, this is what it's for, absolutely. Yeah, so do we have any questions?
Just a couple of comments, this will require residential business license, and you're familiar with the requirements for that. Basically, uh, the business should be operated such that the neighbors, for all practical purposes, don't know it exists. No signs, no extra traffic, no any, any kind of disturbance to the neighbor. Any of those would, would violate the requirements for residential business license. So, you understand that?
Yeah.
And the most important ordinance the city has probably for this is the noise ordinance.
Noise, yeah.
And that's usually the biggest problem with, with dogs. So, as long as you understand that, and I'm assuming you're gonna have the proper licensing for a kennel.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my only comments.
Okay, those are the same questions I had on the.
Okay. Kate, is there anybody in? Kate, is there anybody in the audience that, okay, Sofoni, would you go ahead and sit down? And then we'll, you had something, would you please come up and state your name and your address, please?
My name is Donna Cornell, twenty three hundred eleven West, twenty three twenty five North. I am directly across from the property. And I do not wish this kennel to exist. I do not want a business in a residential area. Uh, dogs do make a lot of noise. I have lived near a kennel at the past. Um, I also know there'll be a lot more traffic. There's a lot of children in the area. People coming through won't have any idea who lives in that area. I would rather not have it.
Okay, thank you.
I also think that some of the neighbors have turned in letters that might be considered.
There, yeah, there was a, uh, letters, uh, there was a letter that was sent, emailed and documentation. It was sent to the planning commission for review. And so, we are aware of this. Now, Sofoni, you said that you only had, what, probably four maximum?
Yeah, ideally, I mean, ideally, like I don't ever take more than one.
No, talk to the podium. Yeah, sorry. I should have brought you back up.
More than one at a time. It's never been an issue. Um, so, I'm not really sure what to say to that, but.
Okay.
So, how many dogs of your own do you have?
I have one.
Just one?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, you're looking at four in addition, like, like, like take care of four in addition to your dogs.
So, yeah, it would be in addition, yeah.
Just one other comment. Um, business licenses are renewed each year. Should it turn out that you're not in compliant with the noise ordinance and the residential business license ordinance, that could be subject to scrutiny by the city council in their review for the renewal of the business license. So, this isn't a lifetime guarantee. I'm, I'm saying that primarily to you. We have to assume what you're saying in good faith. If you don't perform the way you say you are and you are in violation of code, then that will be considered when your license is renewed next time.
That's understandable, yeah.
Well, and if I'm not mistaken, Mayor, if there was complaints filed, it could, uh, it could also, uh, cause the license to be revoked. Is that not?
There is a process for that.
That's why I was, that's what I'm, yeah, okay. Okay, 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 thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay.
I recommend we close the public hearing.
A motion by Greg. Second by Lou. Okay, we're now, uh, make a recommendation to the city council to approve or deny a conditional use permit for a kennel license for Sophie Parkin located twenty three eighteen North, twenty three hundred West. Like I said, you guys read the concerns, the email that was sent, so. Do I have any comments or any?
Well, I would, I would recommend approval, given the understanding that you must comply with required city ordinances. And if you do not, that license is subject to being revoked.
Okay, so we have a motion by Lou. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg. Okay, motion passes. I'll, I'm sorry, okay, I'm new at this. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Now, the, uh, the next city council meeting will be January second, so you need to be here at six thirty for that, okay? Okay, next on, I appreciate you guys backing me up on this, cuz I'm. Okay, uh, now, uh, the next one, item C, uh, uh, open a public hearing to consider the request of a conditional use permit for an accessory building for Steve Peterson located at twenty four forty four West Taylor Road. Do I have a motion?
Do we open the public hearing?
Okay, motion by Darren, second by Greg. All in a favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, come on up, Steve. Now, just so you know, I, um, I had Lindsay send a copy of your site plan to us a few days ago from the, your business, your building permit. And so, in fact, Lindsay's pulling up right now.
Yeah, so you can see on the, kind of the northeast side, uh, it, it spans twenty six feet and then twenty two feet on the east side. So, it's taking the existing building. I just gonna, the stuff I'm parking outside, I wanna park inside.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
So, you're just wrapping around the existing bar?
On two sides.
Yeah.
I, I don't mean to question you, but the plan says twenty feet, not twenty two feet.
Uh, there's twenty feet and then there's a two-foot piece, just kick out right on the front.
Okay.
So, it's twenty, you're right, it's twenty feet with a two-foot extension right there.
All right.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Pretty cut and dried. Okay, any other questions from the audience? Okay, um, do I have a motion?
I'm gonna be close to public hearing.
Okay, second by, sorry, Jason?
Second.
Second by Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, make a recommendation to the city council to approve or deny a conditional use permit for an accessory building for Steve Peterson located at twenty four forty four West Taylor Road.
I recommend we, to the city, uh, I recommend that we make a motion to the city council of approval for the addition of the additional structure attached to the building for Steve Peterson located at twenty four forty four West Taylor Road.
Okay, motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by, little Greg. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I, most passes. Okay, Steve, next, January second. Yep. Nope, I think you're good to go. Yeah. You betcha. Okay, uh, consent items. Approval of minutes dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty four.
Recommend we approve the minutes dated November twen- fourteen, twenty twenty four.
A motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by Darren. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, report on assignments.
None.
None, Jason?
I didn't have any. Uh, there was something Geneva mentioned about a youth city council, but I, it sounds like that's functioning. I don't know.
Are you on that committee?
No, I just, she had mentioned she would forward something.
Oh, yeah, I think Geneva's on the committee for that or working with David J. Is it?
Working with David.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, if there's not any need for me, I'm, I don't need to be there. I just, I know that she had mentioned something about that.
I might wanna talk when she gets back, you know, after the first of the year, just talk to her.
I, I think once they're fully staffed up and running, they may want additional help that's gonna do this year.
Okay, Lou, do you have anything? Okay, Darren?
Just, uh, the work on the PD overlay.
Great, by the way, great job on that. You really took the bull by the horns and nailed it. So, okay, I did, while you're discussing that, I did write down on this PD overlay thing, uh, there're gonna be a joint work system with the city council on the sixteenth of January. We'll set a public, we'll set a, uh, public hearing on January twenty third for the planning commission. And at the same time, it'll be on the agenda for approval for the city council, which will vote on it on the sixth of February. So, anyway, okay, Greg?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, I have just a couple of things, since it's, we've had a, uh, since this meeting has been so stinking long, I think I'll bore you. I went to the, uh, U org along with the mayor and Bob Bland, we went to the Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant, uh, meeting on Wednesday. No, yesterday, I guess. Yeah, and, uh, it's always interesting what the new things they come up with and everything like that. But they came up with a new one, which I'm excited about, besides the stuff that you've already heard from me the last three years, the last two years. But they have a new one called, uh, CPR, the Community Parks and Recreation Infrastructure. And basically what that is, is when we got the grant for the Mountain View Playground, we got half of it from the ramp and then the other half came from, uh, U org via the National, National Park Service. They, they did the award. Now, they, the new one they created, the Community Parks and Rec Infrastructure, it covers everything that, that we could, could have done, you know, with, with any park, including, uh, playgrounds, swings, slides, everything, parking lots, sports courts, field, walking paths, lighting, et cetera. But it's a maximum of two hundred thousand dollars. And after the meeting, I chatted with, with the, uh, cuz we have to have matching funds. They require always matching funds. Ramp always requires matching funds. And talking with, uh, one of the, one of the guys over this, he said that we could apply for this grant and for the grant that's involved in the National Park Service, which is the LWCS, the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and, and, uh, uh, ramp. And I asked him specifically if we could take one, because since one's federal government and one is state, we can basically, if we can get it, we can wrap up three grants to help this. The biggest thing for us on the parks right now is that we met as a park meeting. Gosh, it's been a few weeks ago. We're meeting again next Wednesday, but we met, had a parks meeting. We were talking about, I got all the information for the Far West Park. Well, we have decided to completely abandon that. And the reason is because I hated to waste a grant season on stuff and, uh, we basically, we decided as a committee to focus on the Meadows Park instead. Dave Anderson brought up a, a great, uh, suggestion, which is that area over there is parks poor. And so, we decided to focus all of our efforts on that Meadows Park. And so, what we're doing is we're gonna bust our tails and we're going to, uh, the idea is to, and I've already, uh, sent information to Big T, we're gonna get, uh, like the playground will be the same size as the Smith Park, hundred and twenty by hundred feet. And so, cuz you don't need restrooms for that. You can just, you know, we can focus on that and get it done. And so, I sent Big T an email the next day and I'm just waiting to hear back so we can start going over the plans. What we wanna do, and then we're also working with the landscape designer. We're just trying to just, just put this into high gear so we can go after the grants. And I'm hoping, I'm just praying that we can, with this one, I would like to see a hard surface cuz ADA compliant is the wood chip, the wood, engineered wood chips. But it'd be nice to be able to, if we can get those three grants combined, then we can, cuz the, the surface is gonna cost several hundred thousand dollars by itself. Anyway, we're gonna try and beat this and bust our tails to get this all done. So, anyway, I'm excited about it. Uh, I feel very encouraged. Uh, and in that meeting, we also talked about, uh, the rodeo arena maintenance and, and, I mean, it was, most of it was just that fast-tracking that Meadows Park because we just feel like that if we can concentrate all efforts on that, it'll be just a perfect area for, you know, perfect thing, so. Anyway, and then Bob Bland came to the meeting as well and from the Trails Committee, so, anyway. And the dock, right now, it's a moving target. And there's some things that I, I wish I could discuss right now, but I can't. But I will have some solid information by the, I mean, in, in February, January. I feel encouraged by the way things are going. It's just that, right now, if we're forty seven plus thousand dollars over because of, uh, the actions from Peterson, but we're trying to, we're working on some things. We have some things in progress, so I'll have some solid information in the next meeting, so. Anyway, other than that, I blabbered on enough, so, oh, this is wrong stuff. Anyway, uh, final thing is, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I believe that we adjourned.
Okay, a motion by Darren.
I second, so we can get Mackenzie home to her kids.
By Greg to get Mackenzie home. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I always forget that part. I told, I sent Geneva a text.
We want that in a minute, the justification for adjournment.
I, I sent, I sent, I sent Geneva a text and said, I'm gonna make a mistake on purpose, just so she'll know how valuable she is. Ken, I need to talk with you for just a second after, if you have a minute.